My friend, good to see you. Come on up and join the fun.
Our meeting is called to order. Please call and roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rowley? Mayor Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Please stand in invocation and remain standing for the pledge, please. Oh God, our Lord, as we gather for this meeting, may your wisdom and counsel guide us as we seek to act in a way that will benefit all the citizens of this great city. Help us to think carefully before we speak, to act with courage and conviction for the good of all, and to deal charitably one with another. Let our accomplishments be what you would approve and that is accepting to you as we try to do your will. Be with us, we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Rowley and Councilman Shanks had previous commitments and cannot join us for this evening meeting. Under communication, those who wish to speak on any matter not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, you will be heard when the item is considered. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Saunders, members of the Danville City Council.
Good evening.
Mr. King and members of Danville City staff, it's a pleasure to be with you. My name is Davis Montgomery. I'm a district manager for Duke Energy. As always, I provide you with some periodic updates. Mine, again tonight, I promise to be short and sweet, no more than three items is all I've got to cover, so hopefully it won't take too much of your time. The first thing that I had that I wanted to talk with you about is something that you've probably seen. It was an announcement made this past Friday by Virginia DEQ. It's a proposed order between Duke Energy and a settlement of $2.5 million for, and it's related to the coal ash spill of 2014 into the Dan River. It is, as I said, a $2.5 million proposed settlement. There'll be a public hearing, public input for this open until May the 20th, if after that time, if it has to be approved by the state water control board. If you look at that $2.5 million, $2,250,000 is slated for projects that will benefit Virginia localities that were affected by the spill. The other $250,000 will be put in the fund by Virginia DEQ to be used for environmental emergencies. It's a fund that they have established for that. If you look at the order, there's an appendix with it that has 35 projects on it. These 35 projects, if you look at them, are spread across the state. 10 of those are within Pennsylvania County, 14 of those are within the Dan River Basin, the wider Dan River Basin. These are projects that have been proposed. These projects that will be undertaken, projects that will be undertaken, will be selected in concert by Duke Energy and what is referred to as Virginia stakeholders, community groups and others who have input into the projects. So it's there for you to review and to have comment on if you so choose. The other thing I'd like to talk to you about is, first off, I'll begin by complimenting you on your new website. I said something to Mr. King about it earlier. It's a very nice website, very friendly, gives you a good feel as you go in there and it's easy to find things. One of the things I found immediately was the announcement that the city of Danville was a successful grant awardee from our Water Resources Fund. Y'all are receiving $100,000 to help finish the Riverwalk, or to finish a part of the Riverwalk project. It is the Sandy River, as I call it, the Sandy River Crossing. And in the grant application, it made it very clear this was a complex barrier to the Riverwalk and it's one that you would sorely like to see finished. So hopefully this will go towards that and enable you to get one step closer to the complete Riverwalk. So congratulations on that. To give you some idea, we had 71 people file a grant application. The total number of grants from those 71 applications was over $5 million. They awarded grants to 15 organizations for a total grant of about just over $1 million. So it's a very competitive process, so congratulations. The last thing that I have for you. We are working and moving forward with our design work for the Peru-Grogan Park. We will meet with the Parks and Rec folks on April 21st as is directed by you folks to kind of go over the plan that we've got in place. We've been working with a local engineering firm on that. We have a few more things left to receive from them, but we should be in pretty good shape by April the 21st. After we meet with the Parks and Rec folks, then we will bring it to you for the council members' approval and input. So just wanted to let you know that's still moving forward. Yes, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. So originally, the proposal was $500,000 to improve the park. Deemed that we need half of that to fix the park up, we still would receive the other $250,000 or whatever the difference is for improvement.
If that would be the case, yes, sir. But we, the bid that we have back, and it's a preliminary bid, came in at $493,000. I don't think I'm revealing any secrets there. If I did, just strike that from the record. But that's what the original bid came in at. Now, there's some contingencies in there. There's yet to be some things that have not been completely decided. It has not gone out for bid, but that's just the preliminary estimate, yes, sir. It's going to come in very close to what we thought it would.
That's the bid you all sent out for what was in the original proposal or what Parks and Recs came back with that they needed?
The original proposal?
Yeah.
Is one that we drafted off a conversation with Parks and Recs. It's now gone through the local contractor who has put it out and done a preliminary estimate. The next step after we get it through you folks and y'all have the approval is then to put it out for bid or to select a contractor for it. But the local contractor estimated it to be at about $493,000.
On the original project?
Yes, well, yes.
Because what may come out of now may not be the same as what you originally proposed improvements to the park.
Yes, sir.
And what I was asking is if our Parks and Rec people, the team, we don't need $500,000 worth of improvements to that park, and there's $100,000 left over, will we still get the $100,000 off the city?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding. And to answer that question fully, you asked us to work, we were directed by you, to work with the Parks and Recs and lead folks to kind of vet out any of the proposed enhancements to the park. And what we have is the things that they settled on after we vetted everything out.
Okay.
So this should be their gleaned and cleaned list, if you want to look at it that way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell? I've been getting a lot of calls, I'm sure all the other councilmen here also, we are very concerned about the water. And the citizens are very upset about the smell and the taste of the water. I know there are studies that are going on, but could you address that, just how Duke feels in reference to this issue?
I've been asked that several times, Mr. Campbell. We were not asked to take a formal or scientific look at it. I will speak a little bit off the cuff, if you don't mind me doing that, from just general conversations with some of our water scientists and some of the other folks. Very much like what your water director commented on, there are not things present in coal ash that would lend itself to an algae bloom. In fact, there's things in there that would actually counter that. If what I were to do, and this is just a personal comment, Mr. Campbell, but as I look at our coal ash basins, the ones that have the water in them, that are full of coal ash, there is no presence of algae bloom in any of those ponds. But we would agree with what your water director told you, and that's is that we're not seeing anything that would contribute to that.
It's strange that this started after the spill and it was during extreme cold weather. It's just a mystery.
Yes, sir. We understand, and talked with my folks, I think it's the same sort of thing, that usually the contributors are warm weather, still waters, something, maybe nutrients in the water, back in some of the smaller moving, slower moving eddies and tributaries, and that's where they usually come from. But, no, sir, I'm sorry, that's my best answer. I hope that suffice.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Assuming it has nothing to do with algae, and that's not been proven, that's a possibility.
That the coal ash doesn't have anything to do with it?
No, that the algae didn't cause the smell. We've never proved that. The chemicals that the algae put off that caused smell have not been found in the water here. The geodesman, the MIB, all these chemicals, we don't have proof it wasn't algae bloom. So if it wasn't, are there chemicals in coal ash, bromide, selenium, whatever, that cause smells? Or any of your other basins, do they stink? Are there smells that those chemicals, forgetting algae, produce?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. My answer to that would be, in my experience walking along and beside the basins, no, sir, they do not have a smell to them. They, they just remind you of a farm pond that you could find on any farm, absent the cows and some of the other agriculture.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other question, a comment? Thank you, sir.
Mayor, my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have something to say.
She was standing first.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so excited.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm pleased to meet you today, council. Pleased to meet you all tonight. This is my first time being here. I know a lot of young people don't come out, but on Facebook...
Give me one favor, please. Could you put the microphone right in front of you?
Okay.
Yeah.
On Facebook, we've been talking a lot about this, the taste of the water, taking the bath, drinking the water. It is so bad to the point that we are going out getting bottled water, and that's costly. Even in the restaurants, some of the restaurants won't even serve the water. We go in the restaurant, they are giving bottled water and canned sodas. And on Sunday, we went to one of the restaurants and we could not drink it, it was so bad. My daughter got up and went to Kmart and bought us all sodas, and that is really costly. And, and I'm thinking, okay, there's something, it's a problem because before the ash, we didn't have this problem. I am 46 years old and I have never heard of algae in the water here in Danville. And it's a problem. And I know we are doing a lot of talking about it, but something has got to be done about it because it's costing not only the citizens of Danville, but it's costing even the restaurants are having problems. We are all losing money. And something has got to be done about this. We are still paying our utility bills, we're still getting the high utility bills, but we are not getting anything in return. That's the way I feel. And something has got to be done about this. Talking about it is not going to do, something has got to be done.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I'll ask, and I'll ask the city manager to comment after I make a few remarks. First of all, on behalf of the city, I apologize to you and to all of our citizens and everyone who are having issues with the water.
Yes, sir.
The first problem was traced to the algae. The second one we're experiencing right now, we don't know. We are trying to find out. I can assure you that our staff are working very hard and doing all they can to find the problem.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate the state coming in, Department of Environmental Quality, coming in to assist us as well. We also appreciate North Carolina doing tests and sharing that data with Danville as well. We appreciate our governor, our senators, congressmen, everyone who's trying to help us. We are so sorry. The truth is, we have not identified the problem yet.
Yes, sir.
To say we have, I think, would be untrue. I do understand, we all understand, I too experienced the same situation when I shower, the same smell.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And when I drink the water. But I assure you, based on all tests, the city tests, the state tests, the water is safe to drink. And I understand people say, "The smell's bad, it tastes bad." I understand that. I don't argue with that at all. But unfortunately, with regards to the smell and the taste, tests show that the water is still safe to drink. Yes, I have bottled water here, but I still drink the tap water because it's safe to drink. That's what I do, others can make their own decision. And I'm sorry that you're having to spend extra money to buy bottled water. I hear that all the time, literally every day, and I understand that. But please know that our city employees are doing, in my view, an excellent job trying to find the problem, working around the clock, doing all kinds of tests. Council members, myself, we've all been down to talk to our staff, we've talked to the city manager and others as well. So we are trying.
Yes, sir.
To say we have the answer would be untrue, and I would not do that. But I do apologize, we are working on it, and we hope to find the problem soon.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. King, want to add anything at all?
I think you did a fine job.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we certainly sympathize with you. Tonight, I was watching, I was eating supper and watching the Channel 10 evening news, and unfortunately, Danville was on the news in an unfavorable light. They were interviewing business owners and citizens who are having trouble with the water. And it's widespread, and we are hearing it every day, and I tell you, we're a council member, and we are very sympathetic. The mayor had contacted the governor's office yesterday. I talked with Ralph North from the lieutenant governor and made sure they were doing, investigating, yes, we would investigate it. I talked with the park DEQ, Greg Anderson, today, and they, their samples, they've sampled the river, their specimens, they haven't got back the analysis yet. They are in contact with the North Carolina equivalent, the DNR, Department of Environmental Natural Resources, and they are sampling the North Carolina side of the river. So there are a lot of people working on this, and it's very frustrating to you, business owners, and us, but I can tell you, a lot of people are on this problem and are going doggedly following it till we come up with an answer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to, first of all, thank you for being here. It means a lot. I like your opening comments, and a lot of young people talk about it, but they don't come and do anything about it.
Yes, sir.
But if you remember the opening comments, I don't know if you heard the opening comments from Councilman Campbell, as a council member, you heard him, he actually, young man from Duke. Tell us more about this smell and everything. And I'll also tell you, when you mentioned the businesses, one of my favorite businesses, and council and I, all of the council members are getting these calls from businesses, we feel the same way you feel, and we are talking to the business owners, the business managers, and we're letting them know the same thing. So I concur with the mayor 100%. So we're not just talking about it, we are trying to be, do something about it. So thank you again for being here, and I hope you invite more young people to come before their council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
One else. Thanks for coming down. Thank you so much, ma'am. Anyone else to speak?
Greetings, Mr. Council, Mayor Saunders. My name is Bruce Hedrick. Live at 250 Halifax Road in Danville and operate SouthSideCentral.com. I come as forecity councilor tonight to express my opinion on the current water taste issue. I believe that the city of Danville has badly mismanaged this issue and as a result, has lost control of the message that the public is getting. Recent statements by members of council have only clouded the message even more. I'll start off with Mayor Saunders' remarks from last Tuesday, when he said he was looking for Tim Kane's help and his advice because Kane had dealt with an algae problem as mayor of Richmond. You were quoted as saying that he had a meeting with Virginia's Department of Environmental Quality and Chris Collins from Senator Kane's office sat in. I personally, as a member of the media, was disappointed that you weren't notified of the meeting, nor that the city's own media department and public information office has even mentioned that meeting. You also said you were attempting to contact the White House on this issue. Sadly, Danville has a lot of people with low information rationality that actually believe that Tim Kane and Barack Obama can actually accomplish things regarding a water taste issue in Danville. I'm not one of those people. I consider those statements to be false promises and bluster at best. After making that statement one week ago tonight, we've heard nothing else from this meeting with DEQ. Next, I'll address Vice Mayor Gary Miller's river trip expedition last week. I've already published a blistering editorial against his attempt to look like he was the chief crusader solving the problem, but I'll recap some of my problems with it for the council members and the citizens that haven't read this yet. First, Miller only notified reporter, Red Street Bureau reporter Denise Thibodeau, and she was the only one to accompany Miller up the riverbank. While there's nothing wrong with that, I believe that Miller knew that he would not be asked any challenging questions by her. That turned out to be correct. Second, Miller observed no visible signs of algae and declared that to be of interest. There's been no visible signs of algae detected by anyone in this second round of water taste issues. Third, Miller collected samples of river water and a substance that he believed to be coal ashed and will have them tested. I certainly hope that in the spirit of full disclosure that you will issue a statement of those test results to the public and the media. We'll be glad to press that information out. And finally, and most damaging, Miller brought up the specter of coal ash contamination with absolutely no scientific justification at all. I strongly feel it's highly responsible for any city official to even approach conflating coal ash issues with the water taste concerns with no scientific indications. Miller was quoted as saying, "This never happened for the coal ash spill, so you have to wonder." No, you don't have to wonder. You have to use logic and rational thinking. You can think that this problem is being detected in the Smith River now, that hasn't had any coal ash contamination, that that wouldn't be the cause of the algae blooms. "So you have to wonder" is a phrase that makes low information people justify informing and believing conspiracy theories that are being spread around this city. It leads people to state up at the mall food court that this water is poisonous. I heard that last week. I immediately corrected that person. Just yesterday, I'm sorry, excuse me, Miller's lone wolf river trip was even made morally repugnant to me when he told council members he would be out of town on business and unable to attend the funeral of a council member's relative. The day was also floating up the river on his own agenda. The city has dropped, blocked the ball before, and I said before, they've lost control of the message. The city needs to recapture control of this dialogue in the same way that the police department is trained to stop a brewing riot. First, you put on a strong show of force. In this case, this calls for a daily media and public briefing on the city's website saying that what happened today, any test results, and any information that the city can put together. Tell the truth as brutal and as honest as you can. The answer of, "We don't know, but we're continuing to work on it," is highly acceptable, especially in the face of throwing out conjecture. I personally know that the water treatment plant is pumping out non-stinky water right now. Most citizens have no idea of that. Second, the police department is trained out to take the leaders of a, to take out the leaders of a brewing riot. The city must do the same. They must directly challenge and fact-check any and all rumors that are circulating in the community. The public is hearing and repeating rumors and outright false statements. It's not going to be pretty for you to come and say, "This is completely wrong, and here's why," but I feel it's necessary to regain full control of the message. The city needs to form a task force and make sure that all officials put out a unified message that is factually correct. When Dr. Miller said, "If you've got some kind of cancer and on chemo, you should probably drink bottled water," he's right on target. That should have been said as medical advice on day number one. On day number 30, people who don't think for themselves turn that into, "Gary Miller says the water is dangerous." And finally, folks, city council needs to make things right with the customers who are paying for water that tastes bad and is borderline undrinkable due to taste. Tonight, I strongly urge council to urge, I'm sorry, I strongly urge council to add an open discussion about possible remedies to tonight's business session agenda so that water customers can see some of the directly, the ideas that can be floated out. If you can't do that, at least add that to tonight's work session agenda and then immediately issue a press release with a transcript of what was discussed. Tonight, I hope my words hit home with all nine members, seven members of council tonight, and with the citizens and water customers of Danville. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Earl Wilson. My life experience, taken me to West Virginia several times where they've had coal ash and coal spills. The water seems to taste similar. That was only remedied later by dredging the entire streams that were affected. Now, mainly, what they were saying happened up there was there's a sulfur bloom, and sulfur is always in coal. And when we're talking about $2 million to help out, that's far, far too little. I've lived here most of my life. This is the worst I've ever seen a problem in this city. We've had people come in for race week who are guests to this town, who we may wish to start businesses in this town. We did not represent this town the way it should have been with this problem. And I'm sorry, you guys, but your elected officials, the city manager here, is paid by the citizens of this town. I hate for something like the Chicago problem where they couldn't remove snow enough and they removed everybody in the city council afterwards. I suggest you please get this straight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on any item on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is James Turpin. I'm not sure if I should speak on this particular item on the agenda or weight to the budget. It is related to the budget, also future budgets, but what have you desired?
We can talk about the budget presentation a little later on, but I will hear your comments now if you wish to make them.
Pardon?
I will hear your comments now if you wish to make them.
All right. I've just got brief comments, really a suggestion for this budget and also future budget years. As council knows, when they voted to stop the cost of living adjustments for the retirees, it enabled the city to reduce the contribution to the retirement fund for this next budget year, two, about $2 million. And that'll be $2 million savings, not only this year, but future years. And my suggestion is, instead of spending all those $2 million on other items, that some of that money be set aside in a reserve account, say 10% or 20%, to provide for future bonuses, that we know is going to be coming for the retirees or if there's going to be a need for it, probably over three to four years. It's the right thing to do and the prudent thing to do. It's the right thing to do because, don't forget where that money came from. The retirees are doing without cost of living adjustments, so you have the $2 million savings. It's a prudent thing to do because you know the need for the bonuses are becoming in the future, and as I say, every three to four years, depending on what inflation rate does. So if you do that, it'll make everybody happy, make life much easier. To set aside $200,000 a year, that's 10% of that $2 million, should accumulate enough funds to cover the bonuses as the years progress. So that's my suggestion that you give serious consideration to. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Anyone else? Okay, before we continue, Mr. Wilson, would you ask Ms. Bowman to come back in, please? Would you ask Ms. Bowman to come back in, please? Before we continue, please remain standing. I wanted to welcome the chairwoman of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors to our meeting. Glad to have you here. You're welcome to come any time. If you wish to come down and say hello, the microphone is all yours. Under a minute, is the motion approved, approved our meeting held on March 3rd, 2015, Mr. Vogler? Second, Mr. Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Chair.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks. Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Under new business, an introduction to the FY 2016 proposed budget. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is the time of year when we release to the public a proposed budget for the coming fiscal year, in our case, fiscal year 2016. fiscal year, in our case fiscal year 2016, which covers July 1, 2015 through June 30, Our city council has asked in this budget that we stay the course in trying to reestablish Danville as a community of opportunity and a community of choice. In other words, we want to reclaim Danville's status as a place of economic opportunity and an attractive, safe, desirable place in which to live. That means in terms of the budget that we provide just the right mix of municipal services and facilities to satisfy current resident demands and attract newcomers, and that we operate cost effectively with affordable taxes, fees, and utility rates. The proposed budget for 2016 is $262 million, of which $101 million constitutes the general Also in our proposed budget, we have capital improvements and special projects amounting to $19 million, and that includes items such as buildings, road and utility infrastructure, equipment, vehicles, and computer software, economic development, and a continuation of our blight eradication program. In fiscal year 2016, we will continue the current municipal services and facilities at current levels, and there are no increases in property or other taxes. We are considering a 3.5% wastewater rate increase that would be spread across customer classes through customer charges and consumption rates. In the coming fiscal year, we're proposing the city employ 1,143 workers. That includes one less solid waste collector. We're able to do that through automation. One more fire code inspector to beef up our inspection of buildings initially in the River District and then expanding elsewhere. And then two deputy court clerks to address the fact that small staff there is extremely overworked with their workload. We are proposing that employees through our Pay for Performance program be eligible, depending on their performance, pay increases ranging from zero to seven percent. This is higher than normal because we're trying to make up for past years where no increases were given. We have some representatives from our school board here, and included in the budget is $18.6 million in operating revenue and debt retirement, and Danville supports its public schools at nearly twice the state required level. Starting tomorrow on our website, danville-va.gov, we'll have the basic budget online, and by the end of this week, we'll have more extensive material online and also hard copies of the budget at the Public Library and the Westover Branch Library. And then coming up on April the 21st and May the 5th, in both cases, seven o'clock in this room, the fourth floor council chambers of the municipal building on 427 Patton Street, we have a series of public hearings. On April 21st, we have a public hearing on the schools budget and on utility rates, and then on May 5th, on the city budget. I can assure the citizens here with us in the council chambers and watching on TV that the city council welcomes comments on the budget or any other matter. They understand that not everybody wants to come down and provide testimony at a public hearing, so they welcome your comments, and we do too. As far as the city administration, we'd be happy to hear from anybody with comments or suggestions or questions on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Okay, also, I'd like to welcome Dr. Ed Paulhamers is here, School Board Chairman, and Attorney Stephen Gold is here as well from the school board. Thank you all for coming as well. I appreciate your presence. Okay, under communication, Mr. Manager.
No further communications, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Whitfield.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, we respect the salute and the loss of his sister. It was a beautiful home-going celebration. We just want you to know, Brother Jones, that we love you, that the pains that hurt God's Spirit will fill the emptiness, and we're praying for you and your family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap.
I too like to offer my condolences and prayers to my fellow councilman and friend, Alonzo Jones, at the loss of his sister. And please know that we'll be thinking about you in the continuing days. And thank those for coming tonight. It's always enjoyable to have public to speak their opinion, and it's healthy, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank all of the citizens in the community, everyone who was there for me and my family. I would like to take this time to say, to not use the term councilmembers, but to use the term friends, because you were all there for me, and I just want to say thank you. And I just want to thank everyone for how you helped make my mother feel so better through this situation. Bless her heart. And the last comment I have was, there's in our Virginia magazine that we have, the question was, "If I were mayor?" And there was a lot of young people who wrote different things about if they were mayor. Just want to read one to you that comes to mind tonight. This young person said, "If I was mayor, I would take ideas from the citizens. Their minds are so bright and beautiful, and I could honestly say that this is the epitome of our mayor. He does that." So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Let's give a follow-up. Also in that journal, there's an article, and they mentioned that several cities, including Philadelphia, I think San Diego, maybe Detroit, were, as Mr. Vogler suggested, using their buses, their ball fields, et cetera, for advertising. Expect to get millions of dollars. So you might look in the back of that, there's an article about that. Next, if you didn't get a chance to see Godspell this weekend at the theater by the Danville Players, it was awesome. I was just amazed. I've been to the Barter Theater down in Abington several times, one of my favorite places to go. And I tell you, there was some talent on that stage at North Theater, every bit as good as the Barter. It was an awesome play. And they'll be doing The Lion King, I believe, is the next one. And there's Elf, yeah, coming up too. So if you get a chance, go to the Barter, go to the North Theater and watch this outstanding entertainment. And finally, one of the rules of council on which we learned at the VML is you never debate the public. Councilmembers should never debate the public. So I'm not going to debate the accusations tonight. I'll just point out that, if you notice the picture in the paper, there were no reporters on that boat. So nobody went up the river with us. I take seriously the health and welfare of the citizens of Danville. I'm a physician in my other life. I was also studying biology and studied microbiology, so I feel I may speak the lingo better than some of the other councilmembers. I assure you, I'm not going to rest until we find out what's causing this. And even today, from a very reliable source who is very close to me, and she wouldn't want her name mentioned, at the Smith River Park, that smell was detected. So there is, I think there is something going on at Smith River, and that's our next journey out to check the Smith River. And I know DEQ's already looked over there and haven't been able to find anything, but the smell was there today. So we're still on the case, and I realize the frustration of the citizens. I'm hearing it, the hospitals having to give bottled water out to our patients, restaurants are having to do it. If you take a shower, you feel like you're taking a bath in dirt, or, you know, it's just foul. We've got to find the cause, and there are a lot of people working on this, as I've said, and we will continue to work on it. Thank you.
Mr. Rowley. Mr. Shanks.
Coming in. Can you go to the next person and come back to Mr. Shanks?
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, I appreciate the shout-out from the Vice Mayor mentioning the advertising and revenue potential, and I know, City Council, we changed the sign ordinance a couple years ago to open up, to allow for that. I've been a little bit disappointed that we hadn't actually seen it come to fruition yet. I wish I could take credit for the original idea, but the way that it came to my attention was I had read other places that were doing it and seen success with it, and created a whole new revenue stream and allowed local businesses to promote themselves in the process. So I really hope that we continue to have those discussions and find a way to make it work here, because I do get calls from businesses who are interested in doing so. I'd like to thank the Danville Fire Department, the Life Saving Crew Regional One, and Danville Regional Medical Center. My wife, rather, strange circumstances past week, both of her grandmothers had a pretty bad fall, and one broke a hip and one came close to doing it within a day of each other. And so both ended up having to go to the hospital, and I can't thank enough the first responders and everyone from the start to all the way through, and one of the grandmothers did have to have surgery. Everyone did a fantastic job, so I just would like to, and she wanted to make sure that I expressed my gratitude to all those who did help and did a fantastic job and are continuing to do so. Have some really great people doing service for our community. I saw a statistic the other day that said, "One out of every five people access the Internet exclusively through one of these, a mobile device," and they expect that number to reach 50% within the next five years, exclusively accessing the Internet through one of these. And I know I brought this up in a previous council meeting, and I'll bring it up again because I really hope we have this discussion. I would like for the public to be able to report a power outage, when their power goes out, to get on one of these, go to a simple, mobile-device-friendly website, put in their name, their address, enter it in, it gets sent directly to our system, and then they can also, it would show a map of where power outages have been reported in the city, so they'll know they're not the only one, or if they are the only one. I think that's a discussion we need to have, and again, this is not just the future, it's the here and now, and we need to continue to do things. Our new website looks great, this is the next step. I believe we need to have this discussion. And lastly, I too just want to express my condolences to Alonzo and to your family, not just a colleague here on council, but my friend. And I feel very blessed to have been able to attend and witness, I can't describe any other way than a very uplifting service, and, you know, felt very blessed to have been there. I left feeling very uplifted, and I think most people who were there were, it was a beautiful service. And, you know, this council, we spend a lot of time with each other, and here, there's times where I see you guys more than I see my own family, and I think so a lot of us have that bond that goes beyond just these council meetings. So Alonzo, I just want to say we love you, brother, and we're here for you always. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks, I did share with council that you had another commitment, and I really wasn't expecting you to make it, but like you, if you can, you always do. So we are on communication, and I asked the clerk to come back to you, so now is your turn.
I apologize.
You're fine. No, you're fine.
I could have waited out there and saved you the time, but my apologies to council. I had a previous business engagement, I could not make this meeting in time. I was dead-set on making the work session, and I was fortunate enough to get back for these comments. I'm not prepared for comments, but I do have two things, I guess, I'd like to add. Alonzo, my thoughts and prayers have been with you and your family all week. As Mr. Vogler described, the service was quite a celebration, and I could tell it was uplifting to your family and you, and it was certainly uplifting to me and I know other members of council. Don't mean to beat a dead horse, and I've missed, you know, the last 35 minutes or so, and I know there was some discussion of the river, and I unfortunately didn't hear what's been said, but I would like to throw in a few pennies worth. It's on everybody's mind, as I'm sure everybody here is aware, today, yesterday, the last week has just been solid contacts with the public, wanting to know why we can't do anything, and wanting to know why we assume it's not related to coal ash. I'd just like to share a couple things. It's frustrating for city councilmembers to be in a position of public contact but not be in a position to speak directly with some of the experts in the field who are telling us things, and we're getting this information, and we're putting our faith with the experts. And it's frustrating that we can't find an answer. What we're really looking for is the cause of the cause. We know what the cause is, it's high phosphorus, high nitrogen, high acidic levels in the river. To, I would just like to add that in two separate occasions this past week, I've heard of instances on the Smith River, one in Eden, one in Martinsville, where the river just smells horribly from this same problem. And that's certainly upstream from Eden and the coal ash field. I think we do have a problem. I think with DEQ working on it, I'm hoping that we can get to the cause of the cause, but I'm frustrated as much as anybody else in the public is. I know this past week, and a week and a half, our water was worse than it's been the whole time, and I know that changes from around the city because of the way the water flows through the system. But not meaning to be redundant, but I do want to say to the public that we are all very upset and concerned and wish we could do more, but we have to rely on experts, and we need, if we can't get the answers from one set of experts, we need to pursue another set of experts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Shanks. I saw you standing back politely, waiting for the meeting to adjourn, but I want you to come up here and take your rightful place, and I'm glad you did. Thank you so much for doing that. And I say to Councilman Jones, welcome back. We love you. Beautiful home-going service. I understand there's more than 500 people there present to show their love. That speaks well for you and your family, and we love you, sir. We just simply do. Meeting adjourned.